The Boyd and Carrs Collective is gonna start an event, a yearly event the third week of June.
Okay.
Not that that, I see the third thing to one. Master Plan.
That mic was having the same problem with the speakers.
Hey, so what do you got?
Make sure we have it on. You got the call, you have these speakers.
Yeah.
So, I guess it's.
So where do you get? So you're getting some reverb or what?
No, it was when the volume's up, we had to delay, you know, we talk and then.
Yes.
It was later comes through, so I just turned that volume down a little bit.
Should be, there shouldn't be anything coming out of that.
Alright, I'll make sure we're broadcasting audio.
All over the world. Yeah. Remember the issue that we had with the, uh, the guy who was able to chime in? Yeah. Hey, how's Mr. Van Damme doing?
Doing well, you're so.
Good. Okay, so.
I was listening to Facebook this morning.
They're allowed to unmute themselves, we turn that off. And we haven't been able to figure out. Because it looks like all the citizens are right, that it shouldn't come up as the options.
Yeah.
But for some reason it is, so, I mean, that's the fix for now, until we can find a bigger fix, so that kind of puts you back.
Thanksgiving, that was good.
But oh, my driveway started to do it. She can't participate because.
Well, you can let her talk, but she can't vote, and she's not counted as president.
Right.
Okay.
Are we gonna be able to get Nicole in?
She can zoom in and she can participate in discussions, but she can't vote in.
Okay. Not until legislature changes the open meeting act.
Okay, hope her daughter, so that's more important than. Whether, I, I didn't even know that she was scheduled for surgery.
But more insights than.
Well, well, her note to us was, can I be able to dial in?
Yeah.
Uh, because my daughter's having surgery that day, and I guess. You know, family's a lot more important.
Oh yeah, first things first.
Yep.
Exactly. Alright.
You ready for Thanksgiving?
Yes! Going around the drive to Chicago. My daughter's hosting the first of the daughter's thing.
Tradition, eh?
Oh, well, it's true. Better than this last weekend. Yeah, the only thing I'm disappointed about? I just got my pass for Boyd Mountain.
They're opening up Thanksgiving there.
Well, for pass holders, they're opening up on Wednesday.
Really?
Yes. If you're a seasoned pass holder. So I'm gonna be driving, I'm gonna lose the whole weekend. Oh! Spending family. Well, it's my daughter that got me the pass, now I can't use it, my doctor's, it's. The irony is unfortunate. You don't need these to hear.
No.
I guess still. Happy Thanksgiving, Melissa.
Thank you, mine too as well.
Yeah. Happy Thanksgiving, you have a great day, thank you, thank you. You too.
So, do you expect any controversy on this?
Um, no, it's usually kind of just a procedural thing that we have to do every year.
So you were sure of that some snow over the last. We're, we're too much time behind the snowboard.
Yeah, I had a plow, three times.
Uh, coverage per. This part that private wrote there hires Jim Pimasco in order to do that, and so for three hundred and fifty dollars, I get. Thirteen plows, and then after that, it's like twenty-five dollars a plow, but sort of probably burn free.
It's a time of year where. Grounds are cold, you ask, and caring them down.
Yeah.
Then it's supposed to get warmer in this week. Yeah, it's, uh, apparently Thanksgiving is supposed to be, you know, forty-five, forty-eight degrees and. I was telling Melissa that, I mean, this now makes me a little happy that, um. Havasco uses. A, um. His normal plow truck, which he backs in and then puts the rear blade down and pulls it forward into the street. Uh, he's been using one of his, uh. I guess long trucks with the plow in the front and putting it in, dropping the blade and then pulling it back. And, uh, what happens then is where the truck goes, it basically. Taps dies. And dragging the blade is never as good as pushing.
Hello? Yeah, hey, how are you doing?
Good. Now, who was the original commission that actually put this thing back together in fifteen and haven't made any revisions to this master plan since?
Uh, we updated the teacher land map last year.
Okay.
Um, it's reviewed after five years in England.
Okay.
So we're doing now. Last year, it was the intent to update it, this year. But. You know, I talked with the, 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 um. You know, the short term round. And president, the, the, you know, that. Well, I wasn't on it either, but it sounds, and everybody had openings for people, so there was. You know, a lot of the consultants would be described, and I was thinking, it would be good if I put them in.
And, um. Uh, what was the document, the, um, public input? Was the one that Nicole had brought up that we went over, or been like last year?
On the public participation.
Public participation thing.
Isn't that part of the management?
No, no, it's its own, uh. You, you need document, and that was part of the RRC.
That's what I was thinking of.
And that would have developed that document that had a part of. You know, package that it sent.
Right, right.
And so that updated and.
Sure.
Changed, I mean, last year, this changed a few things, a lot of it was just how we keep the environment.
Yeah.
Uh, but majority of the, um, kind of change.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess from my perspective, how do we actually devalue ourselves or as a city? In terms of how we're actually abided by. The master plan.
That's hard to see in your view.
Well, you know.
And then you also have the goal, the objective that the city commission established. Which lots are tied to the magic plan, and they evaluate level of the debt last year. Identifying all various goals and objectives that we did in the car school.
Yeah, we'll talk about this in the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Since I've been on the board for quite a while, just, um, we've seen the master plan change and update and we see the area of change accordingly. Um, most of the time it hasn't played. Most of the time the master plan are being flexed, it's already there, even though there are some things we hope to change, because that's the whole point, it's just a, a plan, what we like to see.
Yeah, it's, I, I, since I come to the business world, you know. You know, everything is built around specific measurable, it's that whole smart aspect of it. And so, as I was reading through Melissa's packet. Um, first of all, we've got an awful lot of goals up there, I mean, I, I think we've got too many in terms of, uh, not that any of them are, you know. Not relevant, but alright, if you're gonna focus, focus on.
Yeah, I think this discussion's lasting meeting.
Oh, and, and, and that, that's fine, it's just.
Yeah. They're going through.
Yeah, it's okay, but, uh, but no, you're absolutely right, it's completely valid, I think that's definitely something for us all to discuss.
And, and, and part of, you know, Scott, my. I'm always used to having informal conversations because I, this is my third meeting, and so it's like, alright. Uh, am I on base, am I not on base, what's the culture?
It's, well, 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 hold on. Am I screwing up? You're very nice at it.
And it's, um. It's, it's something that at the end of the day, uh, I would like to say either the city commission can point to something. And you go from point, point A to point B, here it is the plan, here's the metric, here's what we achieved. Check that one off.
It, it's, you do have a packet over here.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm sorry, I did not deliver on Friday.
That's okay, I could.
Earl, how are you doing today? Got, got me a thermal. How'd you spend the couple?
Good.
Did you like that little curb in it?
Yep.
It, it helps with the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it certainly.
You mean, I don't have to say ten degrees?
Yeah. Two of each arm, I count them down the worst.
Hey, excellent result, one here. Here.
The trip's gonna get us all back to you.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I'm holding out. I don't know what. You're asking the government to lost. Please grab her. Maybe that's even better. Right there. There it is. Here, the hat.
And, okay. The call is being.
All right, well, you.
Into this one. Go on. Here. You. Exxon.
Eric.
Apple. Ian.
Eric.
Clay.
Eric.
Jeff.
Eric.
I'm here, and.
Eric.
Do you hear, did you hear from, yes, Larry and Paul, if anyone being able to make the meeting, the question. I'll make a motion to dispute their actions.
Have a motion, and I have a second, Carl. Um.
Who made the motion?
Yeah. Now. All those there?
Aye.
Close? Alright. Move on to the rest of the consent, uh, move on to consent agenda, approval minutes from August fifteenth.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the approval, like, is that what you found? I have an emotion to the improvement. It landed. I'll second the word. Shannon Ross, second. All of them there?
Aye.
Close? Alright, let's move on to hearings of the President for non-agenda items. Alright, let's go on to the reports of officers, board, and committee, Scott.
Um, the city commission will be hearing the second reading of the short term rental ordinance on the Saturday. Fourth key. Um, uh, with the. Opal intention that they will adopt it at that meeting, uh, so if you are interested in that ordinance. Uh, it's, uh, potential adoption, so you can make sure you're done with it. December a lot of the evening.
What do you want to say against us?
December thirteenth. That's the next city commission.
Okay. You got one tomorrow.
Yeah, um, originally the, uh, short turnaround was scheduled for that meeting, but the commission didn't wanna have both those topics in the same night, so understandably. Uh, we moved that one off and started a new one.
What is the status of, uh, I guess, the state bill right now? Um, I know that it was in committee and whether it's even come out of the committee yet and. Um, do you got a temperature for it?
Yeah, I spoke with Jennifer Renterick at the housing forum of Kettering City. Um, she indicated that it's her belief that they're working on some kind of compromise bill. Um, I asked her, you know, what effect can it have on us, and, uh, she said it's probably best to just keep moving forward. Um, she didn't see, you know, where this would. Uh, eliminate the possibility of an ordinance being adopted, so, uh, she recommended moving forward, I, you know, but they'll probably come up with something, I think this is the fifth time they've tried. Push this through, um. Well, I'm, you know, I'm not sure if I promise, I have parts in support or not. Well, I'm, you know, I'm not sure if I promised, I had parts in support or not, um, when this happened last year. With my understanding that the governor did not sign it, um, there's indication that maybe that's different, so, I don't know. I can't say they're gonna do what they're gonna do and we just gotta keep doing what we're doing.
And want new people in January.
Well, that's the thing, well, that's the whole push, it's getting to the lame duck and.
You know, the unfinished business, sorry, like, yeah, I did wanna update on. Um, lots of Lake Street, if there was.
Um, the funding applications that they were making directly to the, to the state, uh, through, uh, Wayne Schmidt. Um, were not, uh, successful. Um, there still isn't. My understanding, pretty significant gap to funding to be able to move forward. Every time I'm talking with Marilyn, she indicated that the committed project, and I want to see it through. Um, it's just a matter of making it work to, you know, get the money to do it.
So then they not get that three point six million grand earlier, did they not get that?
They did not.
Okay.
No, that was a, I think, a direct request from, right, the state budget, you know, kind of a specific line item for that project. Um, they are opening other projects, only this open ones in Lundy, not too long ago. Um, so they are, you know, active, so it's both, but, uh, we'll see.
Standing in these boards and, of course, officers, there's no unfinished business, provide new business. Um, went to the master plan annual review, Scott?
Yeah, um, as required by the, the state, um, planning enabling act, um, after. The master plan is more than a final goal, um, the planning commission, uh, needs to review it on a basis. Um, there's no requirement to do anything, but you should, should review it. Um, so I provided, um, the commission with the goals and the future language map, then plan. That typically what we reviewed, um, there was a census in twenty twenty and we got the data lab. You know, earlier this year, so, you know, it is a good opportunity to start thinking about an update for the plan. Uh, and that kind of was anticipated last year and, um, but the whole show tremendous. Discussion and actions kind of took up a lot of my time and, uh, no, a lot of my budget has been using. So I recommend maybe looking at that next year, you know, making our request in the city commission for funding to. Help, uh, develop that master plan and also get more herself on board. Uh, we still need to review it this year and that's a clear task. So, um, you know, the goals and objectives, um, the plan, we had, you know, a number of. Target areas, you know, always a, a big one, I don't think, you know, the need there is gymnastic, absolutely, so. The time we develop this, we'll probably increase if we want. Um. And some of those supporting objectives, you know, involve friend that's established in the means. Or is a long-term cultural economics, um, you know, for the businesses, you know. Um, so to me, you know, a lot of these goals, you know, still relevant with the understanding. You know, this is a twenty year timeframe that we're looking at, you know, you don't expect to do these. Every year and complete, you know, something every year, but when projects come along. Hopefully, they're supportive of master plan, they're documented and help that, uh, making decisions. Uh, in regards to, with this plan.
Any questions about any of the goals or objectives in the plan? Right now, are we, are we looking to update this?
Well, I, I would recommend, you know, in twenty fifteen, so it's seven years old and you had a census sense. You know, its development, so it's a good time to begin thinking about it. And I would recommend, you know, you know, we've done the last three in Holland. And I think it's time to get a consultant on and really, you know, kind of take it out to the next level. Um, you know, I was really impressed with what Becker Mayter did with the recreation master plan. Um, and so I think we get an outside body that can really deal with some guidance and, you know, really produce some nice document that could be. Other way to move on this update.
I guess, from my perspective, Scott, how well aligned are the state goals, especially the roles in. Goal one, in terms of inspiring local business and economic development. Um, you have actual goal owners there and I'm. Familiar with Main Street because I'm kind of an adjunct there, uh, but. Do each of these entities carry these objectives on some type of a scorecard or some type of, uh. Uh, when they start to lay out their objectives, how well do these actually roll into theirs?
Um, I can't speak to that, I don't want to leave various commissions and boards, diplomatic, the master plan, kind of, they're effective. But hopefully, they're aware of the document and they understand this connection between the overall, um. Goals of the city and consultant and align, you know, their work, whatever, this plan and that they can add.
Um, Scott, so the master plan is a tool we put in place, who, who actually uses it? And I know, we said before, businesses coming in sometimes use it as kind of finding out their business file, their business. In ways to be.
Well, uh, the primary users of the master plan is planning mission. Um, as ordinance amendments are done, as reasonings are done, as maybe other projects. Um, you know, consequential project, when you, you know, you wanna make sure there's a consistency with the management. Um, the master plan is also used in developing and supporting grants that various projects. That you can show that there's a port for that. Um, so, you know, having that foundation and making grants to the state, a lot of times they'll wanna see, is it supported? You know, by your master plan, so that's why you kind of be, you know, pretty, um, inclusive. With all the variety of things that you go on in the city and have them supported in your plan. And then, you know, as opportunities present themselves, you can use that as a document for.
Okay, um, the only question is, is like, positions, some things in our goals are probably going through, but nothing to do zoning.
Right.
And so that should kind of.
It's more of a holistic kind of thing, yeah.
Okay, is like, having, having wireless broadband, uh, internet and what city has something to do zoning?
Right, it doesn't, but, um, it does have due economic development in this plan, that's one of the.
Okay, and that, that's just why I was asking.
Right, and, you know, if there was a grant that was for maybe installation of that kind of, you know, infrastructure. You can show it in your master plan, this is definitely something that we support, we wanna be for, so that's, that's the kind of, that's actually how it happens, these things.
One of the things that I noticed was really an absence of a focus on sustainability. And if the word sustainability, the curve is only one, once in this document. And, uh, I think that if indeed we do rewrite this thing. Uh, next year, I think we've got to have, um. Much more emphasis on a sustainable community, um. And how we define that is to be determined, uh. Whether it is through solar, whether it is through electric charging stations, there's a many.
Yeah.
Types of, um, activities. That can support that, uh, sustainable type of, of community, but, uh. You know, at, at that point in time, that was the only really missing aspect of this. And then I'm gonna make one more comment that, um. From my perspective, we have gotten almost too many goals and objectives. In the plan itself to ever actually execute these things. So, I would like to see this thing pared down, I've looked at the master plan. For both Manastee and for draft for, uh, Harbor Springs. And, uh, the one in Harbor Springs is actually pretty good. Um, and it's, it's interesting because they have very specific, it's, uh, about half the number of goals. But we've got and it's on the, uh, not only could the community, but the planning commissions as well as Main Street. As well as Chamber can look at and start to integrate into their. Plans for either an annual or, you know, biannual type of activities. So I would encourage, uh, every one of the commissioners here to, uh, look at a few that are similar. Uh, in terms of the types of communities that we are and see the pluses and the minuses. Um, Manastee was a really, really interesting one. And, um, it, it includes the history of the lower barons and, and the historic districts and. What they're gonna be doing here and the other thing that I would like to see built into this thing is, um. Focus on, uh, the restoration of the theater in terms of goal and objective.
So what you're saying is, is you're looking for specific, very specific goals, not just broad goals. I, I, I don't like this, I, I can see a way of pairing this down, being more broad with our. But you're saying be more specific?
I'd like to have.
Margin.
A, something that's measurable. And something that is relevant that the community can point to rather than something that's flying at twenty thousand feet. I like to fly at five thousand feet and say, all right, if the commission, city commission. If this is in the master plan that we're gonna be restoring of the theater, uh, okay. Here's the volunteer committee, here's the fund raising, here's the city commission's, uh, skinning game term with budget, et cetera. Now, let's go on and accomplish that.
The man, the, the scope of a master plan is at twenty thousand. Here, um, when you look at specific projects, that's where you get into the capital improvement plan, the recreation plan. Or the, you know, sub area plans, where you get down to the details, and we've done that for, um, both city parks. Avalanche, um, you know, dude, so, you know, I think those thoughts can be. Represented into a master plan and then hold down in some kind of a sub area. Or a focus plan where you can really get into those. When you put the support, you know, from here and then we don't down and, and we all, you know, more thorough planning project for.
Well, I, I see the, the cultural aspects being the twenty thousand foot. The actionable part of this thing when you've got theater.
Yeah, right, right.
And so, you know, we would say, we wanna encourage a, a, a very deep cultural experience within Boeing City. And I think that is project one, project two, project three, project four, so there's almost an action plan underneath, uh, the goal.
Don't we have a, a list like that?
Yeah, I, I think more what the actual thing is to identify and focus. On specifically what you want to do, you know, in the master plan, you say, you know, the cultural, you know, identity of the city. And under that, we develop the theater, um, and then from that. You can use that as a supporting document to maybe do a specific plan, you know, on that and get that group together. So you don't need to go into details of how that plan is gonna happen, what that project's gonna look like. Uh, but it is supported, so, and, and, uh, the philosophy of the master plan is more of a, you know, holistic. And overview and direction. And then from that, you can develop specific things or specific projects. And sometimes those are targets of opportunity that you don't know, you know, the grant comes available, you know, but. There's not a, you know, annual list of things you have to do from the plan.
But, Carl, let's point out a little bit of point, it would really be great to hear from the city commission as to, hey, uh. This, this coming year, we want you to focus on these things, like they have done before with the housing.
Yeah.
Um, it'd be very helpful for us to have something, a project for the guidance.
Well, I think, you know, the, the whole plan development process is a public process and you wanna get, you know, the essence of the plan.
Right.
And that's hopeful what happens. Um, and, you know, the city commission, it's their guidance from the public, so that's, you know, the, the focus groups and. Their, you know, the engagement to develop the plan is the important part, the engagement focus of what your priorities, priorities should be.
And I think so, how do we, or when do we say check, so, for example. The whole of our recreation, not by national law, it's one of those, but of our recreation, check, we have created trails. Uh, track. Uh, families supported that. The food rules.
Right.
Great place energy.
And I, I think these are ongoing things, I mean, they're not done.
I think they should stay.
You know, and so, yeah, you, you support those things as time goes on, but it's not something you say, oh, we're done, take it off the list.
And I do make a trend with the city of the border because how we got the recreation, went together and worked with skate park, people, the skate park, no. I mean, so these things, uh, I, I wanna keep these things in there. I was gonna do a thing against the improving quality of life for year round residents. Like, it's a little important to focus and some of the other. I, I'm not bringing up what's coming on tomorrow, right there, but. And that obviously the fall market, it's one of the things you could, the whole, and finding options. Is it what is distributed? It seems like a lot of the development is to enhance tourists and, you know, so. But I can see a little bit more. Emphasis on local citizens in, in the master plan.
What is stopping the local citizens from using the skate park or the splash pad? Or the Field of Dreams or, um, things like that, I mean, these are for the local people. As well as for tourists, so I don't think that that criticism from. I, I've read the Facebook posts that were on lately and all the negative, whatever, why don't you give me a house? Uh, you know, that, that whole thing. They, they have to give credit where credit is due, and I think the city is doing a nice job. In trying to promote things for everyone's use, not just for the use of people that don't live here.
I would say I make the C that and a little bit more of that, or, not just one little line, full of one.
Uh.
And here, so just, uh, I, I, there's other things here to talk about, you know, enhancing, you know, a lot of schools. Something like that, the city is a great one. I think there's some side laws and everything else, there's nothing in there, I don't think. So I'm not being critical.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I, I just, I get so tired of hearing some of these. Yeah, no, I, and. I I won't, so I won't comment anymore because it's just not. Yeah, it's not worth the effort, but I think the city's doing a good job and I think we need to keep it more generalized. Because we don't know what we don't know as far as ideas that may come forward, and if we have it generalized. And an idea comes forward, we can say, because it's more generalized, well, that could fit here. That could fit our goal, and if we get real specific, like just noting that it needs to be a theater. Or it needs to be the a splash pad, or it needs to be a skate park. We're limiting ourselves from other ideas coming forward. So I I think I'm behind having it generalized.
Is there anything as a part of any of the goals or objectives that any of you have any questions on?
Scott, you went to the conference on housing. Can you relate that to our. Cheating goal under three hundred and fifty minutes of all, there are more we can do. I I did not know.
The real impetus right now is attacking the housing issue from a legislative. Point of view, um and I was gonna go over this in my staff report, but um. There are a number of bills right now that um passed the House. Anticipated to go to the Senate um and giving relief for a variety of different ways for housing. Um a lot of it's focused towards, you know, workforce and housing, you know, it's. Limits on incomes, uh I've seen a hundred and twenty percent of AMI, that's kind of a right there. There's enterprise zones that they're looking to do, there's taxing suns and. So that kind of legislative push seems to be where things are kind of going for housing. So maybe reflect that in here, if any of those bills come to fruition. And identify them and and put those as part of our plan and support that legislative push. Other than that, you know, the the issue remains the same, there's a lot of the same, you know. Uh talk that that we need housing at all levels, at all locations and um, you know, in. You know, one big issue is money, and it's identifying where we can come up with that just because of, you know, manpower. Materials are just so costly, it's always difficult to do anything, make it not much work.
Would, are you looking for a motion for us?
Well, um if there's any um recommendation to um leave it at this or, you know, update it next year. Now, I would recommend um updating it, I think in time, and um. So most of that effect, then you can um maybe go through the budget process next year. Ask the city commission for funds to help um update the plan.
What what does a consultant normally cost in order to put one of these things together?
Something like this, you're probably looking into twenty or thirty thousand dollar range. But, you know, it's as much or little as you want them to do. Um and I've seen them for, you know, five or ten thousand dollars, but you get a pretty limited thing. If you really want a robust plan with a lot of good public engagement, you're gonna have to, you know, probably spend some money.
I would like to see, figure out a way to get more public involvement in the master plan and get people here.
Yeah.
Um to to give more input, because I know a lot of people say, well, master plan, this and that, like, well, yeah. Right here, what, we need you here to help us.
So that's where you can do some creative things, like when we did the point on water plan, you have that whole. The stinkies on all the plants and that was pretty well done, so that's kind of what I'm looking for, and that was a plan that. That was funded uh by the state because we are retail credit certified. Um, you know, I spoke with uh our representative. And indicated that there may be some technical assistance available for the master plan and projects, so, you know, there may be some ability to match some funds there.
And one of the things that Harper did, uh they put out a series of seven topic specific. Surveys on their city website. And it had varying response rates by this, and they summarized the results, you know, what they, I mean. Gathered um in this and the other thing that um I found interesting about Manastee's. Is that it uh really mapped the demographic and the uh changes within the city. From the two thousand uh, you know, between the census years. In terms of how uh this particular community or that community has changed. And we are aging as a community, and so at this point in time, this master plan should reflect. Uh that aging community.
And we're mainly growing one.
Not by much. And see, wh- what's interesting is that. As we age, there is less kids in the school system. Because we have fewer families.
Yeah, it's two thirds of what it was twenty years ago.
And so, this was one of the situations I brought up with our superintendent. Is that by investing in bricks and mortar, when you have a really declining type of uh student base. Is that a wise necessary investment in building the whatever.
Yeah, and that's a very important point, it's a very important thing, they have good social demographic data in your plan to support what you do. And that's all part of the update, you know, uh they want to have that as part of it, you know. I've done a lot of that in the past, but I think that's where consultants can bring in expertise to the next level, to really go through those numbers and. Give you some really good information on, you know, where are you standing.
And I think, as you say, the fact that we just are getting census numbers from. Most recent census is a good time to be doing that.
Yeah.
I think the school district too is suffering because we don't have family housing available. Um, the workforce that they're trying to hire out here is young families. Um, and so if we have housing available for young families. Our school district numbers are not going to continue to decline. We're at state right now where they do find, because we don't have the housing available for family housing. Even the two hopeful developments, the one at the library and the one at the office on Main Street. Are one and two bedroom apartments. One and two bedroom apartments do not suffice for families. We need something in town houses, uh that might be an answer for a rental at least. The co- as someone mentioned, the cost of a building, a residential home has gotten astronomical. And as a planning commission, we can plan for high density or things like that, a single family. But is it going to still be um within the reach of a normal family? We may have to go for rental housing, like I said, town houses, we need three bedroom or four bedroom units. Uh if we're going to have families move to this area. And it it may be rental, I just saw an ad in the paper or on Facebook for our new um anti extra home community. They're starting those units at one seventy nine. Which is probably about thirty or forty thousand more than I had envisioned that they would be. But it it it, it's still, even with the lot rent, which part of. Go pay what would be uh property taxes if you have a single family home. Um even that uh brings it to the level where. A family making eighty thousand a year, which is unreasonable if two people work. Um forty thousand a year is still entry level jobs. Um, you know, that would be.
Fifteen dollars an hour, uh that's our newest manufacturer, the the. Two working families is making thirty bucks an hour, which last time I checked, even going to cut house payment. At a hundred and seventy nine thousand an hour a year, and it's.
Right, um but I think, but this is definitely something that if we go through the process, we agree, I think we really make it. Um part of, and I think that's a really good point, you know, that really fits that, and um right now, um I'd like to make a motion. Um that um we will go ahead and work on this uh for next year. Be redone in a larger capacity and try and help the ball net and let the city mission know and I'd really like to have the. Funds allocated for this, um and it would just be a tool that would be very helpful, and then if we make it very um. Easy to use, if it's if it becomes something that we can look at time and time again, as a city uh planning mission, you can help us move forward, especially leading along. All right, add a motion. Uh I want a motion that we update the master plan. And let the city mission know that we like to allocate funds for doing this, but to do it well and right. With the help of a consultant. With the help of a consultant.
Is the motion that we update the master plan or is the motion that we recommend the city mission? Authorize this.
It's a recommendation that you update the master plan and then you're encouraging the city commission to support.
Yeah.
With uh adequate funding to um hire consultants.
Somebody second the motion?
Um, well, well, go please. All right.
Please.
Bye.
Now, Aaron, are you thinking that if we do get approval that, you know, Scott goes ahead and. Uh would we all interview the consultants or?
I would recommend that, no, um I would identify you like a um. A group, you know, a small, a more than, you know, three or four. Uh do those kind of interviews, um you know, invite myself, city managers, city representatives. Uh this commission, maybe other municipal city commission, that kind of thing. Uh but again, first step will be the goals, through the budget process. City commission agrees and um dedicate funds for that and we move to the next step. You know, putting on. We put our proposal out there and then um see what we get and start doing.
All right, let's move back to adoption of two thousand two hundred and three planning commission um meeting.
Um as required, um the planning commission is required to adopt when you're calendar, it is also. Identified by laws when at one time the meetings are on the third Monday at half thirty. Um with this calendar showing you more specific dates, um well, identifying very complex with any other dates.
Period, but in April, why didn't the seventh day and seventh point was?
Thank you for taking.
Absolutely.
I have a motion to. What is correction in April to uh April seventh?
Got a motion in a second?
I've got a second.
Okay. Roll call please.
You here?
All right.
Please.
All right.
You know.
Bye. That's the report, Scott.
All right, well, can I touch on? So like I said, I I went to the uh the housing board in Travis City, I just lived there one day. Um and there was some interesting stuff, there was a a panel of speakers. I I know you may remember Sarah Lucas, now, is a. Executive director for um world development. Um, I'm not quite sure whether she's hired a couple of people yet, but she was going to. And then they're gonna give her some money to help develop programs, I think it was like three million dollars. Um, not a lot of money for the region that she's covering, but at least there was support for that program. And at the conference, there was a lot of indication that we need to continue to support those programs and these new initiatives. So hopefully that as they grow, we get better funding and those, you know, better results that we've done a lot. And then um those other bills I spoke about, so um, you know, the. Hopefully will pass and get signed and they'll get some new legislative tools that will help, you know, narrow that gap for for developing a project. Um and then um, and the law, I talked about that, and then um the Fox One Development. Um they do have, I believe, seventy or so units on site now. Uh they're gonna need to skirt them and and put them on foundations and put them together. But I don't think they have all the utility connections yet, well, that's kind of one of the key slowing factors, uh to like to get access to that.
So there's nobody in Canada.
No, no, as far as I know, we still don't have gas, but I'd see.
Quite across the spectrum through there.
First initially planned to just do a phase approach and develop half of it, sell it out and develop half, they decided this. Move forward, develop little things, so they've got, you know, all those and everything, yeah, and then. Uh so they're getting units on, at least they got units, so I don't know, so it was. Kind of concerned that they wouldn't be able to get them in that kind of way, but.
You know, uh. They have purchased or tried to purchase that church property, I know that there was talks that they were gonna try.
The neighbor bought it, so that can, let me say that.
Okay, I did see some work back there, so I was wondering who was doing it.
Okay, they worked it up to the line, but the neighbors, you know, they wanted to protect their interest and bought it and.
What is the problem with D T D and getting that gas service in there?
I don't know, this.
The city manager talked about that a little bit at Team Blaine on Friday and. Uh he said he was gonna call D T D, D T D after the meeting, because that's what. What the the whole lot was, pretty much.
That is, and that's, you know, supply chain, you know, parks, over the van, we don't, I don't.
Yeah, well, we're starting to get into winter and trenching with respect to natural gas lines. Um coming from the timber business, where it is almost a fifty percent surcharge. In terms of the cost associated with that and um. It's.
If you have any connections, I'm sure Mr. Manastee would.
Supply chain is also holding up. Actually, with the internet, of course. And supply chain was also holding up the consumer's energy. The developer, which is in the jam, and made behind that because of their, because of supply, supply chain. Well, I know that right now, uh most of the transformers that consumers energy utilizes. Well, I know that right now, uh, most of the transformers that consumers energy utilizes. Um, come from China. And so, uh, normal turnaround or leave time order order transformer is between ninety and a hundred and twenty days. It is now between six months and nine months. And I've got Jim Carter, who you approved his bill up here. And, um, if he started with consumers energy, you know, I offered to step in and. Help with some of his stuff, but he just got this temper service, uh, put in, um, just a few days ago. And he's got the same problems right now with D T E, uh, because he's actually running that gas line right down the side of that. That abandoned alley. And, um, at this point in time, uh, I've never seen such, uh, what's the. Problems with, uh, utilities and, uh, with respect to getting stuff in.
Can you tell Scott?
What's I asked?
Okay.
I have a question. Has there been any interest in, um, will I purge property, the red building, any proposals yet?
I haven't seen anything. Um, I believe the city manager may have gotten one. Um, and I believe he may have sent, you know, to somebody else who was informing about it. So I, I don't think there were a lot of. So you guys, um, you, uh, need a motion for a general? On several. Motion from Mr. Martin, uh, Sacrament Ross, Paulson Peter, ah, I propose, okay. I'll see you guys, um, next month on the meeting team. I do anticipate that we will have an agenda item for the development plan reviews.
Okay.